Okay.
There it is. Good evening. We're going to order the Council Infrastructure Committee meeting of September 20th tonight. And first item on the agenda is the 43rd Way intersection update at Providence Point. John Mortensen has a presentation for us. This is an informational item. Thank you, John.
All right. Good evening. My name is John Mortensen, Senior Transportation Engineer with the Public Works Engineering Department, here today to give you an update on the southeast 43rd Way intersection project at Providence Point. Little background on the project. I've got a vicinity map here. It's located off of 43rd Way, which is in the northern part of the city, at Providence Point. Providence Point is a 55 and up community. And what this project is going to do is we're going to... This 55 and up community, there's two driveways, two entrances to it, and on each side of 43rd. So we're going to realign the driveways so they're across from each other, make it safer and easier for people to come and go from the community. And we're also going to install a traffic signal. Little history on the project. It's a project that's been around for a very long time. And so Providence Point was first annexed into the city in 2003, and then the following year, the city did a transportation needs study and identified that we need to do some improvements, which led to further studies, and eventually the preferred alternative to build a traffic signal and realigned the entrances to Forest Village and Providence Point. And then around 2009, 2010, the city was designing the project, got really far, 90 to 100 percent of design work done, and then the project got shelved. This year, it's been dusted off, and we are taking the design from back then and updating it to have bid-ready package to go. And as I mentioned, this is a primary purpose for the project, to improve safety. So here's an exhibit showing the proposed plan for the project. And so this is the Forest Village side over here, and their driveway is going to be relocated up the hill, and then the driveway to the main part of Providence Point can be located down the hill, so that way they'll be across from each other. And add a little bit of sidewalk in the project in order to help with pedestrian connectivity. I've got a retaining wall right here. As I mentioned, we're adding a traffic signal, so that way it'll be signalized, make it easier to come and go. And then, looking at the typical section, so here's our existing section. It's not too much. Doesn't have any sidewalk for the pedestrians, little room for the bicycles, guard rail, steep slopes, so we're going to have the sidewalk. So this is looking west of the intersection, and what we've got proposed. Turn lane to turn into Forest Village, bike lane for the bicyclist, retaining wall over here, center turn lane, the... Oh, whoops. And then we've got the downhill lanes and bike lane. So... Oh, sorry, Bill.
Go back to that picture a little bit. It may catch people off guard. I'm trying to see what that thing in the middle that looks like a bus, to me. I don't know what that is. You've got a left turn lane, and you have, it looks like a bus, and then something else.
I think it's just meant to be a big vehicle, whether it's a bus or a...
It's just another lane of traffic. So it's two lanes going up, two lanes down, with a left turn lane and a right turn lane?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So I mentioned this is a project update, so I wanted to talk about the work that we've completed so far. We've got a consultant under contract. It's the same one who was designing the project back in 2010. And so they opened up their old CAD files and started updating the project and updating the specifications to the current standards. And after they got their plans and specs updated, they submitted a set for city review, and we distributed it internally to different people in PWE, the Public Works Operations, Development Services, Parks, and got a lot of comments, which we've then compiled, sent back to the design consultant, and right now the consultant's getting those revised. We also have a draft SEPA checklist that's currently being reviewed by the Development Services Department. And then on August... This August, on the 21st, we held a community meeting, an open house, up there at Providence Point, and it was very well-attended. We're estimating about 150 people were there on a weekday afternoon. Very impressive to have that many people there. Shows the passion in the community for the project. Got a range of questions and comments. People are excited for the project, a little apprehensive about making sure that they're able to come and go from their community and go shopping and go elsewhere. And so we talked about access during construction and those kind of things, and the need to keep in communication with the neighborhood. Got a lot of comments about unrelated things, such as concerns about development and things like that, and we tried our best to address those as much as possible, and then stay on the topic of the project itself. Well, the next steps are the consultant, as I mentioned, they've got the comments from the city review, and we're working together on the details, getting those resolved. That way we can have a bid-ready package of plans, specifications, and a cost estimate. One of the big things that we do have to do is put together a cost estimate, so that way we can put a funding request into the city council to construct the project. And as we're working through some of the design details, this traffic signal project, one of the biggest components is a stormwater detention vault. It's a really large vault. It's 109 feet long, 20 feet wide, and 11 and 1/2 feet tall. And we're building it on the grade going up the hill, which is 6% or 7%. And so we're spending a little bit of extra time on that vault, just because it's a really big-ticket item, it's really risky, just the amount of how deep they'll have to dig in order to install a vault of that size, especially on the uphill end. So that's a real big priority that we're working on addressing right now, is to make sure that we can manage the risk and the cost for the city as best possible. We're paying extra careful attention to our retaining walls, make sure that we meet the modern design criteria, because those have changed a little bit. As part of it, we have to do some utility relocations, and for both Puget Sound Energy and the Sammamish Water District, we're working through the details. As for the PSE relocation, that's for the power, and so that's a really big priority, because, well, for any community, getting power... Having power is important, but for a 55 and up community, I think it's even more important. So we're really paying attention to that, because we want it to go as smoothly as we can for the residents. And like I said, we've got some water... A little bit of water line relocation for some of the retaining wall, and we're working with the water district on that. And so for the budget, so this year, our budget's pretty tight, and so I met with Sheldon and Kurt this afternoon, and we came up with a plan to make sure we can meet our budget and get the project completed on time. And then, as I mentioned, a big step, or next step, is to... One of our next big steps is to put together a cost estimate, so we'll be able to know how much it will cost to construct the project and all the other contingency-type things that will come along, like the utility relocates that are outside the right-of-way. And with that, are there any comments or questions?
Thank you for the presentation. I think I sort of got lost at the stormwater detention vault. So is the stormwater detention vault, is that a separate need, or is that related to the traffic improvements and coming about as a result of the need for the traffic improvement? Like, what's the relationship between the stormwater vault and the traffic improvement?
I'll take my best shot at it, not being a stormwater engineer, but because we're widening the road, we're adding impervious surface, so we do have to meet the current stormwater requirements. And out there, there is nothing in terms of treatment or detention. So we've got this pretty large area that we have to treat and detain and meter out with the pre-existing condition, which would be before there was any road or development out there.
Thanks.
That was kind of where I was going to. It's a big vault, and there's any other way of dealing with that, assuming we'll have, you know, a little more runoff at least with a little more impervious surface, but that's a lot of vault.
It is a lot of vault. Unfortunately, the vault is necessary, because not only do we have to address the new impervious surface, but because of the amount of reconstruction of the whole area, we have to basically retrofit the existing asphalt that was there within the project area. So it's not just the additional area that we have to provide the retention-detection for, but we have to do it for the entire project area.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, and you didn't quite get to timing of all this. You mentioned about budget, but could you go over the timing, please?
Yes. That's a great question. So our goal is to have the bid-ready plan specification and estimate done by the end of the year. Want to have the cost estimate done a little bit before then, so we can start working with the city council and putting together a funding package for the project. Ideally, I'd like to be back here in front of CIC either in December or January to talk about the project and the costs and construction. And then, hopefully, depending on what the council decides for funding, ideally, I'd like to bid it in early first quarter of 2019, and then right around the time that the weather starts to get nicer, start building it. So I would imagine spring construction if all goes well.
Spring, summer construction, kind of thing, so folks can anticipate that possibility.
Yes.
And then also, budget-wise, it sounds like you're trying to incorporate the estimate for this project into the 19 budget request, so it comes as a whole part of the budget package?
No.
How's that going to come, then?
I'll let Sheldon chime in here.
We're not sure we're going to have the numbers. Not been timed for the 2019 budget deliberations. We won't have those until probably late November, early December, which that's a little late to put it into your budget process. So it's going to be an agenda bill, special agenda bill, coming in front of the council, requesting the funding, with a recommendation of how to fund.
Okay. And that's what you're talking about, in December, January, coming back to infrastructure here or two with that agenda bill?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I guess, doesn't necessarily need to be a special agenda bill to finalize numbers, finalize the appropriation, but there potentially would be an ask in the 2019 budget based on preliminary information or what we've got in the capital so far?
No, we do not have any numbers in the 2019 budget in front of the mayor right now. We don't have any numbers for that. We're still getting information that will inform that. It's... We're not far enough along to really put a reasonable number in front of it.
What planning document do we have that has numbers in it for this project?
The planning document we have right now is the CAP slash TAP.
So we do have some numbers that we could use generally to not necessarily leave it entirely out of the budget. We could put it in the 2019 budget as a placeholder, just so we don't have to come back next year and say, "Oh, my gosh, where are we going to find this money?" So if we want to plan for it, we should plan for it with some sort of dollars. Even if it's not in the proposed budget, the council could consider including money in it. Is that right?
Yes, you could.
Okay. Thanks.
And for one, I'd like to encourage looking at that, because when we look at budget as a whole for the whole year, and we leave out pieces that we know are coming, it's kind of hard, because then we start looking at pieces, and that's a situation where all of a sudden in January or February, we're adding budget amendments to something we just approved. So I'm not sure the best way to do that, but it helps us look at the whole budget. Like I say, a placeholder there, so we know whatever, you know... We can understand it's an approximation, and we can understand that it's limited, but if we have that there in our minds when we're looking at the whole budget, we know all those things, and not... If it's not there at all, it's kind of like a surprise in January to folks, and that's not a good way. So I'm not sure... I know what you're saying, how we used to do that, but I'm wondering if we could kind of amend that a little bit, so at least the council's aware of those things that are... We know are coming around the corner, you know, with final numbers right after we approve the budget.
I'll talk with the mayor's office about getting the numbers based upon the current understanding in the CAP slash TAP. They will not be correct numbers. The numbers are going to be substantively different.
And it's okay. It can be asterisk to that. At least we know the project's there and coming. That would, I think, would help us in budget deliberations as a whole. It'd be two past better budgets. Anybody else? Nope? All right. Public comment?
We are overdue on this project, there's no doubt about that. Couple of concerns. One is pedestrian bicycle access and connections to the East Lake Sammamish Trail. We have the railroad grade, which Sammamish has their sewer line in, and that comes up through Providence Point. Providence Point does not want it to be a trail through the Providence Point, which they've been fighting forever. But we do that rail... We are working on the trail down at the bottom at the Mallard Bay to get the trail down there, bicycle pedestrian trail there. Comes, then hopefully, it'll be on the sewer line, old railroad, up all the way through, but it... And it's an easement all the way to the Providence Point boundary. Just west of Providence Point is Providence Ridge, that development, which we have trail corridors in there. But I'm not sure we got bicycle trail through there. We at least got a pedestrian trail through their... Part of their open space. But the question is, sidewalks mean it's wider and more costly and all of that, but we are going to see bicycle pedestrian traffic through that area. We're going to have the schools potentially further on the road, but we're not going to see those kids coming to Providence Point to live, so that helps on that. There's also, just thinking of this vault, just be sure you check for bedrock. And when you're on the railroad grade down there, there's definitely bedrock visible and a little waterfall right there at the Providence Point boundary. So you... And I don't know if you can make your... If you can stair-step down this into two sections or something, because, yeah, you could have an interesting deal. It's one thing trying to get a utility through some crummy bedrock, but that's a lot bigger. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other public comment?
Plus one was last thing, the vault.
Okay. Plus one was the other public comment on the vault. All right. So this is informational, so I think at this point, if that's the last comment, that'll take care of it for now. Thank you for that update. All right. Our next item is Newport Way Northwest retaining wall, is another informational item presented by Kurt Seaman.
I didn't see it there.
All right. Got it. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ramos. We're Kurt Seaman, Transportation Manager here at the city, and we're happy to come here and present you some more information on the Newport Way project. We've had a request to go to the conclusion of this presentation, so I'm going to start with the conclusion and then come back and go through some of the other slides. So the conclusion, the summary or conclusion is that we are proceeding on Newport Way. This is the Newport Way project from 900 to 54th, just to be clear, because we have a couple of Newport Way projects currently under design. But it is our intention to proceed with the design and with the walls that were shown to council and approved by council back late last fall, I believe it was December. The design is consistent with what council approved. It's also consistent with what the community... Did a lot of community outreach out here on Newport, and it's consistent with what the community wished to see for the Newport design. Basically, so nothing has changed here in what... Between what we're talking about tonight and what we showed to you late last fall. Basically, and I'll come back to the little more detail on the section here in a second, but it's basically a... Either a two- or a three-lane section, depending on where we're at on the corridor and whether or not we're having medians. It's the wall is offset from the back of the sidewalk by two or three feet to create a pedestrian-friendly environment between where the wall sits, where the sidewalk is, the landscape buffer, and then we also have a buffer that's provided by bike lanes, and then the travel lanes. So it's consistent with what we've always talked to you about. It's consistent with what the neighborhood has requested, and what's the new information we want to present to you tonight, or why we're here, is to talk about how this design meets the objectives of minimizing impacts to steep slopes. And I want to... Where it gets a little more complicated is to talk about the urban design elements and changes that were made to Central Issaquah Plant relative to walls and development. So that's the conclusion. It may make total sense to you now. It will... I promise you, it will make a bit more sense once I go through the other slides. So this is where we're headed. That's the conclusion. Are there any questions at this point? Okay. So now I'm going to go back and go through just briefly how we got there. So this is the... These, again, as I mentioned, are the council-approved cross-sections. There's two sections here that are most represented for the corridor. One from 54th, so we're starting at the east... The west end of the corridor, I'm sorry, 54th to Cougar Mountain Trailhead. That typically is two lanes, bike lanes, landscape buffer, a multi-use trail on the one side, and then a landscape buffer and sidewalk on the other. Walls were needed both in a... Against the mountain here, and then also on the downhill side, where they're needed for... To keep us out of sensitive areas, wetlands, that kind of thing. So that's the section up to the Cougar Mountain Trailhead. And then as we proceed further east towards SR 900, we are looking at typically a two-lane section. The reason for that is there's no need for a turn lane. We narrowed down the roadway here at the request of the community and at our recommendation as well, because the third lane is not necessary. The road can become narrower. That reduces the impact to the... Well, to both sides, but especially to the mountainside of the roadway, so... Which is what we're trying to do here, is minimize impacts, still maintaining sidewalks, buffers, bike lanes, all those good things. So these are the two sections as you move down the corridor from the west, going, driving to the east. You've seen this slide in numerous forums over numerous projects. What this is meant to illustrate is we've had an extensive public and council engagement process dating back to May of 2017, where we first presented this project to CIC. We've had the blue boxes here represent workshops that we've had with the community, and public meetings, so you can see these up here, several workshops. Here's another workshop we had, and summary presentation to CIC. More workshops. I guess they're not just in blue, they're also shown down here. But culminating, as I mentioned, with council approval of the corridor concept, and that was in December of last year. Just to refresh everyone's memory, this is not just staff and council and community, but also represents discussions with fire parks, police, King County Metro, a variety of stakeholders. So in summary, we feel like we have a really good design that reflects what the community wants to see out here, and reflects really the best design for the corridor. So here's where it gets... Here's sort of the crux of what I want to talk to you briefly about tonight, is this project is right here, and it is straddles... So here is the Central Issaquah Boundary, the orange line, and here's the Regional Growth Boundary, which is in the valley floor. And this project, if we want to get really technical, straddles this Central Issaquah Boundary, again, shown in orange. Here's our project, shown in yellow. So the one side of it technically is within the Central Issaquah Boundary, the other side is on the edge of the Central Issaquah Boundary. And so why that's important is there are new architectural standards developed for Central Issaquah, which council approved again last fall, approximately the same time as this corridor design was approved. And the intent of the design standards for Central Issaquah are summarized in these two elements here, the hillside, slope sites, and the site wall. And I won't read this to you, you've got it in front of you, it's in the packet, but again, just to sort of summarize what... How we understand the intent of this... Of these standards are, especially related to developers, is don't grate out the site, put in big walls, make big flat areas, and then leave big walls that adversely affect slopes and are not very aesthetic. They provide you as a developer a lot more buildable space, but they're contrary to fitting into the natural environment and fitting into, in this specific case, the mountainside. So what we have proposed here is something that we feel meets the intent of not doing this and minimizing impacts. We are proposing a single wall here that is at the back of the sidewalk with a little bit of buffer that keeps the roadway, as I mentioned, as narrow as possible and minimizes the impact to the existing hillside. So again, although it doesn't do it in the same exact way as what it says here, which I'm going to get into in a little more detail in the next slide, the key point here is it does share the same goal as what you adopted in your urban design standards, which is to minimize impacts, minimize site impacts. And so here's a complicated slide for you, and I don't... Paul, this is the best slide we have here. I don't want to get into the detail unless that's helpful to you, but here's our project proposal. And here's the narrower section. Here's a wall that can get as high in this particular area. I think we're showing a wall that's as much as 18 feet. Now, if you go back here, you'll see in our standards for developed sites, we say restrict walls to 10 feet, and especially when they're adjacent to a sidewalk, no more than four feet. So that's these pieces here. So we are proposing, to be perfectly clear and let everyone know what we're doing, proposing walls in excess of the 10 feet. We did look at these next two pieces here. We did look at what would it mean to meet these standards of the 10 feet. And what it would mean for our particular site is either these terrace or offset walls that never exceed 10 feet, but because the mountainside is so steep here, I don't know if you can see this very well at this scale, but it's a series of step-back walls, each of which are 10 feet, but in total, keep... It's difficult to catch these walls on a steep slope, so we keep marching back up the hillside and create, although they're only 10 feet tall, we create wall after wall after wall, and the same idea here. And so we're in this situation where, you know, technically, we would be meeting this standard of no more than 10 feet, but we believe we would be contrary to the intent of this, which is minimizing impact to the hillside. So therefore, we are moving forward with this wall that is higher than 10 feet, but has the least... has the least impacts to the mountainside. So I think I've probably summarized what's in this slide, but it's a combination of respecting the extensive public engagement process. We went through its sharing the goals of the design manual, which is to minimize impacts. It also minimizes, this is not a trivial matter either, that the property impacts along this corridor would be extensive if we were to look at something like this because what this doesn't show you is there are properties along this hillside in some areas along Newport. So we would also be grading and building walls into those properties, which would likely require purchase of those properties. So, and what else here? So the design manual is, again, our interpretation of this is intended to discourage or prevent site development from flattening out sites and creating big walls. And then on top of this, of everything else, if we were to build walls that looked like this, it's our current estimate is that the cost to the project would be as much as $20 million more than what they currently are. It's about a $30, $35 million project, so it wouldn't quite double the project, but it would significantly increase the cost of the project. So back to my conclusion where I started from, we recommend we're moving forward with our original plan, consistent with what you all approved and consistent with what the neighborhood has indicated works best for the corridor. And, oh, yeah, this is, I think, so we can talk about the engineering details and show you the schematic diagrams, but we did find some pictures. These are mostly, I believe, in Bellevue, but they are similar to what we are proposing for the Newport design. So here's the roadway, here's the landscape strip, here's the sidewalk, here's the walls that are, we didn't measure these, but they're certainly in excess of 10 feet. And although they're a little east, can see them in the first few years, you can see that over time, depending on how they're landscaped and what additional treatments you do to them, we feel they blend into the corridor very well. And so this picture in particular shows the lane, the median, the bike lane, the landscape strip, the sidewalk, with a buffer back to the wall, and really the wall disappears into the whole corridor. And this is similar to what Newport will look like when we're finished with construction and after it's had a chance to, for landscaping to develop over a few years. So I just, so that's that. And here's other pictures, if you'd like to look at those or talk about those. And then I just want to put in a plug for next Wednesday, September 26th, in the Issaquah Senior Center, we're having a public open house. Drop in just to share our progress. We're moving towards final design on this project, and it's been our commitment to the community to share progress as we move forward. So the next one of those opportunities where everyone has a chance to come in and see what we're doing, how we're doing, and give us your comments, is next Wednesday night, right across the street over here, Senior Center, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., and we would love to have as many folks there as can join us. Concludes my presentation.
Yes.
Thanks, Kurt. That's very helpful and informative. I just have one question. I'm interested to see what members of the public have to say. My question is for the public open house on Wednesday. What's the purpose of that? It looks like we've got design well on its way, and you're telling us that you're moving forward with a certain design, so what's the purpose of the public open house?
Sure. So we don't have any, I don't think, any special new information to share per se, other than we are moving towards final design. And we've, like I said, we've committed to no surprises and letting everyone see what the design looks like as we're moving forward. And so we are getting, as we close in on final design, there's, yeah, there's design issues with stream crossings and where the walls are, what the walls might look like, all those things. We want to share with you what we're working through, and we want to hear from you because we've committed to staying with the community on this project from start to finish. So nothing, I would say, earth-shattering or in particular, other than just another check-in point on the design.
Thank you. So this is a right-of-way, and one of the things that was pointed out is that it wasn't, I think, the design standards are not, maybe not applicable. So in your opinion, would going forward, all right-aways be assessed using the design standards if they're in Central Issaquah?
So that's a very good point, and I would say, I mean, everyone can read for themselves what the design standards that were adopted on December 8th, last December 18th say. We've quoted some pieces from those standards. It's only a couple of pages, I believe, and, you know, it talks about, it talks about new development in Central Issaquah. And it's, I would say that it's, the reason that we're here talking to you tonight, wanted to share this, is we're, it's important to us that the other rules that we make for the community are the rules we follow as well. We, our interpretation of this, after having looked and talked about it in great detail, is that it best describes development, and for the reasons I just mentioned, and I think these pictures do a pretty good job of illustrating that. And the other piece of this is we're, that it's important to note that we are trying very hard to meet the intent of what this is, which is, the reason that this is a design standard is like, don't grade out sites and grade mountainsides so that you can have a big flat area to build, minimize that with smaller walls, like it said here. And so we are doing the same intent as what we understand this to be with our proposal by putting the single wall and minimizing the overall footprint within the right-of-way. So, and it's not, I would say it's less than clear here. It's unfortunately, this doesn't talk about, it doesn't distinguish between right-of-way standards and site standards. So that's why we're here, want to be fully transparent on what we're doing here and explain why what we're doing makes the most sense.
Yeah, I mean, my question is because these were adopted fairly recently, and this is probably one of the first instances in which they're trying to be applied to a right-of-way, and so I wondered if...
This is, this is the first instance, as far as I know, and so that's why we're here. So I didn't quite, maybe I didn't try to answer your question exactly.
No, I think you did. And then my other question is, on the walls, the options, the one that would be $20 million more with the multiple walls, how tall is the proposed wall?
So this is...
Original?
Right. So this, this over here, again, I apologize about the graphics, but the wall varies as you go down the corridor, obviously, but this, I think, may be one of the more extreme worst-case examples here. And this wall, in this particular, at this particular cross-section, is 18 feet, slightly more than 18 feet. So it's not quite double a 10-foot wall, but again, as I mentioned, it's only the one wall, and it is the narrower cross-section versus going back to these design standards for sites, which the wall never, never does seem to, and it keeps going back, and pretty soon, I think you've got, I can't quite see this, but at least you have 30 feet or more of wall instead of the 18 feet. So you have a much, when you add up the different pieces of wall, you have much more wall and also a wider impact for the corridor, neither one of which is desirable.
Have another comment?
Well, my comment was a follow-up to Vicky's question. I think the precise question is whether the new urban design standards or guidelines, I can't remember what you, what we called them, apply to street projects.
Yeah.
And that's, I don't know whether you know the answer to that question, but I think that was the precise question that we probably need to answer to. And if there is any ambiguity, I think we need to clarify that at some point fairly soon because folks who come in with proposed projects and even the city projects, I think we need to be as certain as possible about what votes and standards apply.
So I would say that the reason we're here and the reason we're sharing this with you is that at a minimum, there is some level of ambiguity here. And I think that's mostly because what we have adopted currently does not distinguish between sites and right-of-way. And I think if it's possible, and this is me talking now, but I think it's possible with a few more sentences in this to make that distinction and make it clear going forward. So that might be something we want to look at going forward.
So I guess I would, well, I can make a comment in the end. I have another question right now.
And I just, and the other part of this that I failed to mention that I need to mention is, so this is a sort of an abbreviated version of a larger memo that's going to full council, and so that's the other reason we're here talking to you, is so that you're aware of this. And if there's not an action that's being asked of council on this particular, it's more an information, here's what we're doing, here's how we're moving forward. And before that went to full council, we wanted to share that information with all of you.
Well, thank you for that. Appreciate keeping the information flowing. I also appreciate when something could be a little bit ambiguous, that we just keep that all out in the public, transparent and talking about that. I tend to agree, you're trying to meet the intent of what that was doing and not cutting out more flat land, which is, you know, what the intent was. So I appreciate that, and going to the public and here in the council, appreciate all that work as well and keeping this flowing. Any last comments before we go to public? All right. Any public comment?
Can you go back to the 120th, the photo?
The photos, sure.
Just the interesting thing here is the sidewalk is raised up. It doesn't, it's not raised up enough so that a railing needs to be there, but it's a heck of a lot safer for cars and you when you're on that sidewalk. And it gives a step up and takes care of partway getting up the hill. I think it'd be interesting, and I, you would, it would be somewhat of a guess, but for next Wednesday, it'd be interesting on your map, if you could show, this is how high you think the wall might have to be on certain sections. And I think it's mostly the wall of Ivy that's kind of right at the border of King County Park and the Burisma property is how I remember the steepest slope close to the road. Another thing, my geologist friend is driven crazy by all this fake granite walls. He doesn't, because we don't have granite down here, except all the boulders delivered to us. But anyway, it's a tricky thing. The road width at 12, do we really need that wide a lane when we don't have a median and emergency vehicles can get through and that kind of thing, which I think is what drove the wider lanes, was when you had a median and fire and police and the rest were concerned about being able to get to an accident. And if we don't have a median, it seems like a narrower lane could be appropriate. And that, every time you can narrow that corridor, you're definitely reducing the height of the wall and the impact to the ground. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
So one thing of interest is the Burisma side is not in the Central Issaquah area, and so the walls, it's, are sort of dubious as to whether they would be included in the Central Issaquah Plan either. Same thing happens with the rest of Newport Way, because one side of the road for most of it, Central Issaquah Plan, the road, maybe, and then as soon as you get across the road, you're in a different territory. So you are in sort of an awkward interpretation area anyway, as far as I'm concerned with this situation. The other thing is, you might have your rules, but then if you have federal funding, you're also going to have to be dealing with NEPA and some of the environmental rules that roads have to thread through. And as far as I'm concerned, those rules are going to say you have to try to avoid your critical area impacts where you can. And so that means that you have to try to not cut into your slopes, not impact your wetland buffers. So in this particular situation, I totally applaud the idea of not cutting into the hill and not chasing walls up the hill, but I think you need to go further. We've been working like crazy to try to get Burisma protected, to protect our hillside there, yet now we have a road project that looks like it's going to impact that hillside. And in the information that you got, they also talked about having to have a road behind the walls potentially to build the walls and upkeep the walls. And so that adds even more impact. So the question I had was, how narrow does the road profile need to be before you don't have to impact the hillside, right? And then on the other side, you're going into the wetland buffer, and so you have your critical area impacts on both sides. As Dave said, you don't have a median here, and so you don't necessarily need 12-foot travel lanes. You're looking at five-foot bike lanes, you're looking at landscape lanes, you're looking at multimodal trail, even with bike lanes of 10 to 12 feet. So it seems like in that profile, you might be able to reduce with people not even knowing and only have a four-foot wall along that side. I don't think there's enough information at this point in time to understand what the opportunities are, but that is what I would like to see. So minimally, yes, of course, we don't want to blast out that hillside, that would be crazy. And second is, you're going to need to figure out interpretations for the standards and what you're going to want to do with roads, but you do also have to consider there are other rules that are going to impact what you want to do. So in this, I'm going to be a little bit longer, it's great, they're actually coming to you with changes in road profiles, which is like historic. It's like pom-pom time. Oh, my God, we're actually seeing things. So I don't want, I don't want to sound like I don't like what they're doing. I, of course, just want it to be more better, and I would actually like to have a place where people could see these conversations elegantly, because in the, on the website right now, it's very general. Nobody gets to see that much of a road segment. You'd have to find the exact agenda bill. So I would like for Public Works Engineering to have someplace for its projects where more detailed information could sit for the public to see. Maybe you don't have to have as many public meetings if the people can just reach out and tap on the detailed information. I don't know. But I've been trying to get the detailed information for the public for the last 15 years, and this is as close as I feel like we've gotten. So happy, pushing, pushing more. Thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Kurt, I have one more question, maybe you could address? Just to clarify next steps, because you're coming to us here for information, and you're going to have a public meeting next week, right? And you also mentioned about going to council as a whole in a packet of some sort, so just maybe lay out those kinds of next steps coming, is what the public will see.
Sure. So I don't have the schedule in front, sure. So I don't have the schedule in front of me right at the moment. I want to say that we're moving towards final, which... I want to say that we're moving towards final, which are 90% design for this corridor as soon as, I want to say April 19. It will be at 90%. There's, there's next steps beyond that. In terms of dollars and funding, it's a little more complex. This is a, an excess of, I think we're at about $35 million for this project. We don't have that money. The next steps would typically include finalizing right-of-way plans and right-of-way acquisition, completing the design plans, moving into construction, which we would be able, we would be ready to move into construction on what I just told you, probably as soon as 2020, 2021 in that, in that realm. We need to have more discussions, obviously, on the funding part of this. And so, and we plan to find a way to do that moving forward because we think this is an important worthwhile project for the city, but we're not there yet.
Yes, and I was asking more probably the detail of the next few months that the public might see as you're saying for this part before we get to that 90%.
Right, and so I want to, so Brianne Ross is the project manager. She has a more detailed schedule that I don't have with me tonight. And so we can certainly provide that. And I think a great place to provide that likely would be at the next, at this meeting here next Wednesday. We'll certainly have a project schedule going forward that we'll share with the public next Wednesday night.
Okay, great. Thank you. That wraps this item up for an evening. All right, perfect. Next item, our third item is AB 7646, amendments to the Issaquah Municipal Code Sewer Rates as presented by Bob York. This is an action item.
Bob York, utility manager, Public Works Engineering. Tonight's discussion is on the King County sewer rate increase and how Issaquah wants to handle that. So the policy question is, shall the city increase sewer rates as a result of increased wholesale sewer rates from King County? That rate increase would be effective next year, not this year. Our recommendation is, yes, let's increase our rates like we have in the past, equal to the exact rate increase imposed by King County on all their wholesale municipalities. So I have a brief presentation. I'll try to keep it brief without being too brief. Background of sewer rates, how they work, how they work in Issaquah, and then alternatives and recommendations, so. What's the history of how sewage is handled in central King County? Well, King County was originally called Metro and it was formed as a result of problems throughout the Lake Washington, Lake Sammamish and entire King County area as a result of inadequate or localized sewage management practices. So up until about the 1960s, Issaquah had its own sewage treatment plant. It was relatively primitive by today's standards and it discharged into Issaquah Creek. And Bellevue, Kirkland, Redmond, they had their own too. So centralized agency called Metro was formed in the early 1960s and became the regional wastewater agency serving all of the metropolitan area. Metro was separate from King County and then in 1994, Metro became part of King County. And so since the 1960s, when Metro put in their infrastructure, all wastewater throughout Issaquah, including that part not served by our utility, Sammamish Plateau, is, goes to King County for treatment and eventual discharge and into Puget Sound. Here you can see a map of the global reach of King County. Goes all the way, there's three major treatment plants of which, everyone's heard of Brightwater, it's the newest. There's two local plants, one serving Vashon Island and one serving the Carnation area. So how does our rate structure work in Issaquah? We, our rates are composed of, and I'm going to talk only about residential tonight, the commercial and mixed family works very similarly and has a similar impact to what we'll talk about in residential. There's a local Issaquah fixed charge that is based on a rate study that was conducted in 2015. It gave us a roadmap for increases in our local rates from 2016 through 2020, so it's still in place. The one we'll talk about tonight is the King County fixed charge. What King County does for single-family residences is they don't worry about the volume. They impose a fixed fee for each single-family residence equivalent. And historically, we've been told every two years or so that in the summer that there's a rate increase and the historical practice in Issaquah is to pass that increment through using a city ordinance to amend our rate schedule. Then the third part of our sewer rates is a local usage charge that's, again, based on the 2015 utility rate study. It's based on the usage in the wintertime, your water usage. And interestingly, that rate doesn't increase as a result of our rate study results. It's stable from 2016 through 2020. So here's our adopted sewer rates and with some numbers attached to them. You can see the fixed charge is pretty small, but it's going up pretty fast from year to year. The usage charge is per CCF. It's based on winter rates and that stays stable for the five-year period of the rate study. Built into the fixed charge that, in addition to the number shown, is an allowance for four CCF of sewage that's presumed to occur no matter what your actual winter water usage So here's the King County metrics. Again, I said the charges are based on a flat rate based on an average single-family residence. It's adopted by the King County Council. In 2017, just to go back one step, when they last did this, it went from $42.03 a month to $44.22 a month. That was a 5.2% increase. Issaquah rates increase per, we adopted an ordinance to just pass through those rates to our citizens. The King County rate this time is a more nominal increase. It's a $1.11, going from $44.22 to $45.33 per month, again, based on starting in early 2019, the first bill for a full 2019 bimonthly period. That percentage is 2.5%. So this is not an easy slide to see, but you can see how the King County rates and the Issaquah components of the total rates compare. King County rates are in blue. They have increased and they're the majority of what sewer customer pays for. The Issaquah rates are in red and they reflect what I've talked about before. So you can see the, from 2016 to 2017, our sewer rates went up 2.8% without King County increasing their rates. Then 27 to 2018, 2.5% again. And 2018 to 2019, the proposed is 4.5%. So, and that would only have been 2.5%, 2.6% if the King County hadn't increased their rates. So you can see the impact of King County. So the alternatives available are, don't increase the rates, leave them the way they are, don't pass through the rates, but that would end up being a situation where we wouldn't be paying, the sewer customers wouldn't be paying the King County rates and our sewer fund would diminish roughly equal to the amount of, of that portion of the bill that's not being paid by our customers to King County. Or option B, which is our recommended option, is to increase the rates to reflect increased charges from King County as a simple pass-through and the sewer fund remains stable as it was envisioned in the 2015 rate study. So in conclusion, our recommendation is to adopt the proposed rate charge ordinance as presented in the agenda bill that you see, which would pass through the $1.11 King County rate increase directly to our, to our ratepayers. Without them, ready to answer any questions.
Questions?
The, from the King County rate increase, is that based on the cost of sewage disposal just increasing over time?
Well, from, they're paying for Brightwater. They're paying for increased cost of doing a lot of things, labor, utilities. I attended a CWA meeting yesterday and utilities in throughout the country are going up faster than the rate of inflation. So a 2.5% increase in, when there was no increase last year is actually, in my opinion, a fairly reasonable increase compared to what they've done in the past, for example.
Okay. Okay. And do public comment before we go into more discussion? Any public comment on sewer rates? Good, oh, one.
So I sit through this every few years and I realize that I really don't know why the county raises the rates. I don't know if they do raise the rates differently for different municipalities. I don't know if, how much we use the sewer affects the rates. And it seems minimal, right? But as I watch all of you keep going toward impact fees and how much we need for growth, I'm trying to understand all things. Is sewer another one of those things that is impacted by growth or not? And I've never been clear on that. Thank you.
Okay, Kenny.
No. I mean, the county's not planning any new major expansions to their plants, so they've got capacity apparently. You know, I look at my bill and I see how much I'm paying to King County and how little I'm paying to Issaquah. But then when I think about it, you know, Issaquah just has to move this stuff a mile or whatever to the trunk. King County has to move it many miles and has to treat it. And I, 1960, when you went over the floating bridge and Lake Washington stunk, and then in the fall, when it all died, all, there was this brown layer at the bottom of the lake from all the algae dying. It is dramatic what we've done here and how good our system actually works. Now, how much plastic we're putting into Puget Sound from our washing machines and our fleece and a whole bunch of other things, and there's going to be a movie about that next week, I think, up at the Highlands. But that's, you know, there's, there's, our future with sewage is going to get more complex. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now for the discussion.
I have a question, follow-up question to the public comment. It was my understanding, reading the King County ordinance, that it, that it was the same rate for, it's a rate, so it would be the same rate for our city, different.
I spell view.
Cities, yeah.
Seattle, because Seattle and King County.
Yes, for all of Metro's customers, the rate is the same.
Okay.
Thank you for that clarification.
I have a question that, so there was a mention of Brightwater. So I have a separate quarterly bill for Brightwater. Does everybody else? Is it just new? My house isn't new, it was 2005, but since then, I've had to, it's about $240 every quarter.
Right, that's the capacity charge. That's the connection charge, which is assessed to growth for expansion of facilities to handle that growth. That's what you're paying on a quarterly basis to Metro. And I believe you'll pay that for about, it's either 10 or 15 years and then it goes away.
Okay, so I guess my point was when Bob mentioned we're paying for Brightwater, that's separate than these charges or are existing?
That is separate than the charges that you're paying. Those are the physical capital improvements. What I think Bob was referring to was the operational costs. Because what we're paying for is what Mr. Capital referred to is, is Metro picks up our sewage and conveys it through its system to the treatment plants. And all the costs, the operational costs associated with that collection and treatment system, Brightwater, West Point, and I forget the other name of the other plant.
South Plant Renton.
The Renton plant. It all gets put into a large operational pot. And it's that pot of operational dollars, which is what this rate is about. It's not the capital side.
Sure. So, yes, thank you.
I mentioned Brightwater, but Sheldon, it's the whole, it's the infrastructure.
Brightwater operation, connection charges.
Right.
That makes sense because not everybody's going to, existing homeowners aren't going to have that. New homes will. New businesses, new homes. Thank you.
Okay, that's it. Our, little clarification, this item would have been on our last month's meeting, which we did not have. So the, the motion has dates that are out of date. So I'm going to ask for that to say that the motion areas to refer this bill, AB 7646, from this September 20 meeting, the Infrastructure Committee for Review and Recommendation, return it to the full council September 4th, or excuse me, October 1st, not September 4th, which I think can fit on the calendar. And so that's the motion? Anybody okay with that? Yes? That's a?
Yes.
All right.
I would request it. I would. Would request it on consent?
That's my next question. Is everybody okay with consent?
Yes.
Okay, all right. So you got that Sheldon, on consent on October 1st?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you all very much. So that item is done. We are to our, our fourth item, which is AB 7339, Holiday Inn Lift Stations Revisions Project. It's an action item and we have Matt Ellis.
Yep, thank you for having me.
Thank you, Matt, please.
So, yeah, I'm here to talk about our Holiday Inn Lift Station project. We went out to bid in August 29th and received three bids for this project. Unfortunately, we received three high bids and they all exceeded our engineer's estimate. The bids ranged from $795 to $834,000 and our engineer's estimate was about $550,000. We currently don't have enough money in this project, in the budget, to construct the project. So currently, we are proposing to reject all bids and rebid this in January or February with the anticipation of awarding the project in the spring. So a little background on the project. Currently, Holiday Inn and City Hall Northwest feed into one lift station on 12th Avenue that is currently extremely old and it's starting to fail. It also is in conflict with the 12th Avenue Intersection Project that we are slated to start design here in a few years and needs to be relocated. So after discussions with Holiday Inn, they've agreed, if we construct it, to put the two lift stations, or two properties on separate lift stations. One would be owned and operated by City Hall, one would be owned and operated by Holiday Inn, and they would then feed into the main line. So basically, we have three options that we've, we think are available for us at this point. One, we can reject all bids. Two, we can award the project as is and seek more money. Or three, we can reject all bids and try and get this constructed as part of the 12th Avenue Intersection Project. Avenue Intersection project.
I have two questions. One, I don't think I heard you define it, and so for folks who are watching, could you just define what a lift station is?
Oh, I'm sorry about that. So currently, there's not enough fall in the roadway to provide gravity sewer from the City Hall or Holiday Inn to the main line that is currently on Northwest Mamish Road. So we have to pump it. And right now, there's one pump station, and that's in the sidewalk on 12th Avenue. And I think it was built 40 years ago, and it's not in good shape.
Thank you. And then my second question is, what is the basis for thinking that, why would we go out for bid again in six months or three months or less? What makes us think that the bids are gonna be any less?
Excellent question. One, we bid this during a climate that is very saturated with construction projects, and we are anticipating that if we bid this early, there'll be less contractors working so we can get a few more bidders out there who might have a little lower cost. We're also going to do a little bit of value engineering and see where we can cut some costs here or there, and we're thinking we can cut between $25,000 and $50,000.
And then my third question is about the intersection project. That delaying this, I think you might have answered the question when you said we could combine those, that waiting on this doesn't have any effect on that schedule, the 12th Avenue Intersection's schedule?
Waiting on this will not impact that. We're gonna be designing next year and probably into 2020 somewhat for the intersection, and then probably construction late 2020 or 2021 for the intersection work.
So the only impact that this would have on that, it would extend the construction time of the 12th Avenue Intersection project, and it would also, the costs would obviously increase over time to construct this lift station project.
That was my question. It is, it seems to me to be a substantial cost difference for that 12th Avenue, option three, and that's all based on the timing of the delay? Or is that based also on a design change with the...
No, it's primarily based on, I think it's a 5% inflation rate on construction projects we're seeing right now. So it's kind of painful. It's also, the lift station does require some service between now and then, so we're projecting about $15,000 a year just in maintenance to keep it going.
So I wanna kind of get to restate some things a little with, maybe a little more clarity. So we have a lift station that is past its useful life.
Correct.
Correct? So it's functioning, but with a lot of maintenance, and we're keeping it rolling.
That's correct.
Okay. So that's the situation. We don't have the money for these bids that came in or not planned.
That's correct.
So that's another fact. So the three options you're talking about, I just wanna state them again a little more. So rejecting the bid because we don't have the money, that's fine. That's one step. And then the question really, and that is, do they try to re-award it, you know, next winter, January, February, or rebid it? Or wait approximately two more years or so and then do it at that time?
That's correct.
Basically, it's a delay. And we're nursing this lift station right now to keep it functional, and could come into some major cost in those two-year time period, because if something really fails, we have no choice but to fix it.
And we're in trouble, yeah. That's our only location to put sewer.
So we could end up putting a lot of money into something that we're going to abandon a year later, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. All right. So that choice of, and you talked about looking more closely at the design and try to get the most cost-effective way of doing that, and having two lift stations, like I say. So Holiday Inn will be basically own and operate their station?
That's correct.
That would be off of the city's responsibility.
Correct. It'll be in their property.
On their property, and they would have that. And then the, we would have one on our City Hall Northwest property that we would obviously own and maintain.
Correct.
Operate. Okay. All right. So these are all different options than the regular motion that came, so we're talking about those. I just wanna make sure we're clarifying that. That's different than what, how this originally coming, because originally thinking that we would probably accept bids of one or another, right?
Unfortunately, yeah. We wanted, and again, the bids were close, so it wasn't like we had a great disparity in our bids. It was just far higher than we'd anticipated.
Okay. And I just wanted that clarity. Any other discussion here?
For option three, it's more costly, and it also wouldn't be operational until two years later. So what is the benefit of option three? What's the pro?
The benefit would be that we wouldn't be impacting that intersection twice. So right now, we'll be impacting that intersection when we construct these two lift stations. Primarily, that'll be on private property, but there will be some work when we decommission the existing lift station on 12th Avenue. If we did it as part of the 12th Avenue Intersection project, then we would only go in there once, and it would disrupt the public only one time.
Clarification on that. When, say we do this option of rebidding it, you're building two new facilities. Can that, decommission station, you know, how much work do you have to do that they can't wait till, you know, when you're digging up everything else? Obviously, you have to do some line work and some, but how much do you have to do? All of it, basically decommission that all, so you're doing, you're gonna be very active into that intersection there to get that done. There's no way of reducing that.
That's correct. Once we start work, we have to keep going to get those pumps going, and that's partly why the cost is so high, is because we'd have to basically put in temporary pumps until the lift stations are ready to go. So we're looking at ways to alleviate that, but once the project starts, we have to keep going.
And the current pump is under the sidewalk?
It is. It is sidewalk and partially into the lane. It's in a very awkward location. It's currently kind of dangerous for...
It's in that right-hand turn lane in the sidewalk?
It is.
The current lift station straddles the curb line. Goes from under the sidewalk to under the drive lane.
Okay. So, okay, great. Thank you for that clarity. Okay, ready for public comment? All right. Any public comment?
I spent a lot of time in that area. There again today. It would be nice to have a map to show the anticipated location of the Holiday Inn and where the current one is and where the potential future lift station would be, so that it would be easier to sort of understand what the impacts and potential timing is likely, right? Because I'm there all the time, and I don't really know. I do know that a lot of the Holiday Inn property in the grass is actually critical area constrained if they try to do improvements, because it's in the buffer of the wetland. And so the same thing is actually gonna happen with the city's lift station, so I'm not exactly sure where that would end up being in the road project. So without knowing those things, I would have a hard time making a decision. I couldn't make a decision over there, listening to what they were saying. So I think it has to be delayed, but what the final answer is, is different. Thanks.
Thank you. That it? Okay. Was the comments over? Discussion.
I think that it's a little bit surprising to me that there isn't a cost savings with combining the projects, but since there isn't, then the rebid is the less costly of the option. And it also sounds to me like it's a known need for this improvement. So I am interested to hear my fellow Calum and Maris' thoughts, but I think, I think the rebid, the recommendation makes sense to me.
Well, I guess the thing that always worries me when we have a facility that is definitely not functioning fully as we'd like it, because if those things go out, we have, we get in a crisis emergency situation that will create us a lot more cost, for sure, when you have to do that, because we have to act if that happens. So that is a concern of mine for waiting, for sure. And it always would be nice to combine things and tear things up once, but sometimes that doesn't allow us to, things don't allow us to do that, and delaying the street, the intersection and so forth is, you know, we might have been able to help off if we hadn't delayed that a little bit, but those are decisions that are made along the way. So, yeah, I think, and remember, even if we rebid it in January or February, then we get to look at those as well, too. So that doesn't mean we're gonna accept the bid then, because, you know, it may go down, it may look good, it may also go up, we don't know, right? So we would, again, have a decision point then, but at least it'd give us another point to make a decision at that point and see what we have. So that's what I'm thinking would be the best move at this time.
Yeah, I think, I think that if we were, so the lift station has been an issue for several years. It's not new. And I think that if we were, if Public Works thought we were in a potentially dire situation, I don't think that you all would be telling us that a valid alternative is to reject and rebid. I think the rebidding in January seems like the way to go. It'll be interesting to see if we do get lower bids because of the climate. It doesn't seem like the Four Seasons have made a big difference in bidding, but it'll be interesting. And like Bill said, we don't have to, we don't have to accept it. And I would concur with Connie's comment that when this comes back, that it has a map.
So we don't have a formal motion. We have administration recommendation here between us, but we'll go to...
It would be a motion to reject all bids and re, it would be a motion to recommend to the full council that we reject all bids and rebid in January, moving it to the next full council meeting on October 4th?
Yeah, so we do have 45 days from when we opened bids to reject bids or accept, so that, we do have to do it at the next council meeting.
So the motion be, as you said, to take it to full council with the administration recommendation, not the original motion of rejecting and rebidding approximately January, February, that time period, and then would look at bids at that time? That look like a three to, three to vote there on that?
Yes.
So then the question is consent?
Consent.
Still okay with consent?
Mm-hmm.
Both of you? Okay. Another consent time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Matt? Okay. Got up here? All right. That takes care of item D. And the last item on our agenda is project updates, and I'm sure you have, we always have our list that's in the agenda package. Anything in particular this time to highlight for us in the public that you wanna make sure we catch?
Nothing specific to highlight. We did two of the major project updates as presentations tonight.
How's the big project going?
The big project?
The big project.
The Sewer's Inn. It was finished last Friday.
So let's see what the big project is.
Yeah, the big project is Southeast 62nd Street Extension. They're currently working diligently on Lake Drive on the joint utility trench. They're working on joint utility trenches, installation of water main, and like I mentioned, they just finished getting the sewer in. It took them a little bit longer than what was anticipated by a couple of weeks, so they're running a little bit behind. We're working on the schedule right now with the contractor, see what we can do to expedite it and hopefully bring it back into some reality here. So we're working on that. It's going pretty well. Costs are still within contract value, and we're...
Opening?
Given the delays on the sewer and so forth, and the need for paving before we open, the weather's gonna get kind of dicey here soon, so that's one of the things we're concerned with, and we're working with the contractor. And we've actually requested the contractor to come back with an expedited schedule to put more resources on it and to find out how much that would cost, because we are concerned with the weather turning on us.
So for many, many months, it's been opening by the end of the year. Are you...
And still, I'm still focused on opening by the end of the year, but it's really gonna be dependent on whether we can get that asphalt down. And there's a lot of concrete work and so forth in the area of 221st and Fourth and 62nd where it all meets, and then we have to pave after that. So there's a lot of work left. The sewer slowed us down.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. I have a question on the, all right, and we did before, of the bridge on Newport, our little, that we had a fish window we were concerned with and so forth. How's that going, coming along?
It's going very well. The bids came in excellent, under engineer's estimate. We, the contractor has ordered the materials. They are expected to begin the construction on September 27 and finish by the end of the month, which is within the fish window.
Oh, 27 to the 30th, they're gonna do that in about a three-day...
Correct. 27, 28, 29, 30, they'll be done.
So then, before salmon days?
Yes.
All right. Any other questions on anything? If not, we are adjourned at 8:00.